Yeah, he's just adding a little piece off the back of it and as a result he has to come back for that. I wouldn't, it's like a nothing thing, but there's a small increase in the footprint, so I didn't have a choice with that one. I would have preferred not to. If it was smaller, I wouldn't have brought it back, but it was a little bit bigger, so, and he's still within all the.
Okay, I'm gonna start, okay?
Mr. Chair, I have seven oh four.
Okay. Okay, uh, the meeting is called to order. Good evening, everyone. Hi, Joe. Uh, we are going to take roll call and why don't we start with Aaron?
Uh, Aaron Sullivan.
David Schwartz.
Martha Schroed.
Jill Clamber.
Sheldon Cuthbert.
Bob Paul.
And Andy Dracaroff. Uh, the first item on the agenda tonight is to approve the agenda for substantive.
Mr. Chairman, at this point in time, uh, Mr. Rizzi, who was the first item on the agenda, has asked to be placed last. Uh, he's coming in from out of town and as a result, uh, won't be here at the start, but will be here at the end. So, if it's the pleasure of the planning commission, you would need a motion to take and make him actually, uh, item eight and just move everybody up on.
Okay, uh, would then.
I move to amend the agenda to allow Mr. Rizzi to be item number eight on the agenda.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved and amended that, in that manner. Uh, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from April twenty-four. Um, if there's any discussion or comments?
Mr. Chairman, before, um, you go to commissioner comments, I do have a couple things. I would like to point out that we did have a substitute with the minute take, uh, with the minutes. Um, who may not have been, uh, as familiar with some of the things that we do. Um, any correction on the spelling of Hardy? Hardy is a proper name product, H-A-R-D-I-E, instead of the H-A-R-D-Y that is reflected. And then also on the second to last page where it says the Bauhaus is a famous architect, it should read Bauhaus is a famous architectural school dating back to nineteen nineteen. Um, if there's any other corrections or comments that the commission has on those, we'll get those corrected as well.
Okay, thank you. Guys, any comments, uh, or corrections, uh, regarding the minutes from the twenty-fourth of April?
Um, I do, I have, um, kind of a page number, but it is. One, two, three from the end.
If you can give me. Three from the end?
Yeah, it starts at, at the top house in the wrong place. It's, um, the third paragraph down. Dracaroff noted that going from a bungalow to a colonial is very rare and doing it as an attr- attractive and then it just stops. There's no, so I, attractive what?
That's a very good point. I didn't see that.
So, um, and I don't remember exactly, do you remember what you said?
Uh.
If, if it's the pleasure of the planning commission, sometimes with that, we might just truncate the sentence and after is very rare, period.
Yeah, I, that's fine with me.
Okay, and then on the following page, um, just past scene, no other person's wishing to speak. Um, Watts noted she would like to see renovation versus teardown, but is happy to see work done that was desperately, and the architecture desperately, what, needed?
Needed.
We'll insert the word needed there.
Okay, and then.
Thank you.
Well executed and welcomes to neighborhood, so I think, uh, the needs to be inserted in there. That's all I found.
Thank you.
Uh, wh- wh- I'm sorry, uh, Martha, how does that, how should we amend that one?
Executed and welcomes to the neighborhood.
Take, take off the S and add the the.
Yes.
Okay, got it, got it, yeah.
Is that a two-syllable?
I think so, yeah, that's what I.
Anything else?
She's just typing fast.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to add or change or strike? Okay, uh, I'll have a motion and the motion will, uh, you know, take into account all the comments, uh, namely changing the spelling of Hardy to H-A-R-D-I-E. Uh, to mention Bauhaus in the context of architectural school, uh, to change, uh, the sentence, uh, on the third from the last page. To s- to read done that was desperately needed and the architecture has been well executed and welcomed to the neighborhood. Essentially the second from the last page and the third from the last page is to, in the second full paragraph, end the sentence at very rare, period. Deleting and doing it as an attractive.
We approve it.
Okay, any seconds?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, the minutes are approved in the manner just stated. And we will now move to the first item on the agenda as far as, uh, site plan approval. And that would be the matter of consideration of, uh, the Lederman proposal on ALAR two six oh oh five.
Mr. Chairman, uh, just so that you're aware, this is kinda like a two-part thing. Uh, Mr. Lederman will have some comments and then he and I did spend some time talking together. And we did put together a little PowerPoint for the planning commission to take a look at.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mark Lederman. I'd like to present a revised plan to your consideration.
Hello, good evening.
First of all, um, I want to let you know that I listened to your comments and concerns from the first meeting. And, uh, we've made, uh, significant improvements on this, uh, plan. Uh, we have upgraded the quality of the materials. We've added some architectural features. Uh, Martha, we've listened to your concerns about the windows. And we've, uh, changed all the windows, called out to include, uh, gelatin vinyl clad wood windows throughout. We've added, uh, windows to increase the size of the windows, so they certainly, uh, make them more accessible. Uh, we also included a landscape plan, uh, to give the commission, uh, a complete package of what we're trying to present to this site. Uh, and, um, uh, the windows are on the, uh, the roof, uh, the features. Uh, uh, we also want to say that, uh, we've worked very closely with King here since the last meeting, um, trying to address, uh, the concerns that the commission had. Uh, we've worked extensively on the different options, uh, we've discussed options anywhere from, uh, taking the existing home with dormers, uh, and facing the footprint. To an actual teardown of the property and we felt that this option is the best going forward and certainly, um, would be, uh, a benefit to the city. Um, again, like I said, he's, uh, prepared a PowerPoint with some additional details. Uh, we think that, uh, this, um, this proposal, uh, hopefully meets everybody's concern. And with this, um, I'd like to defer to Hank and to present the PowerPoint. There's no taking questions if you can.
Mr. Chair, if you're okay, I'll.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna shut this light off on the front portion. Thank you. Okay, first off, I did wanna point out the conversations with Mr. Lederman have centered around the contention that a colonial provides a better house layout and uses less pervious surface. As well as the issue that no one is really gonna come in and build a bungalow. If he came in with a landscape plan and a new colonial, he might be received somewhat differently. So, in thinking about that, he decided what he wanted to do in our discussion centered around what could we do to improve the plan that he had submitted in order to make it more viable. So, his changes include addition of window sizes, some increased size, trim and rake boards to match the siding. Clarification on material, a larger deck details for the rear of the house, lighting detail for the exterior. Roofing material clarification, as well as an upgraded front door, um, which is going to be a fiberglass door. Um, just for the record, I did recommend wood. Uh, column changes were made as well. He did also hire a company to provide a landscape plan to soften the appearance. So, here's where we're at with Mr. Lederman's house here. If you take a look at the front elevation, what, what you see here is an elongated window. So, these windows were made larger, coming down further. This window was made larger, coming down further. The material's been called out as James Hardy. The shingles are called out as dimensional shingles. Um, you take a look at the roof, the column details here are different, so they've been upgraded and that's on the front elevation. On the right side elevation, this window is still leaving, but a symmetrical window now is placed in the same spot along with a lighting detail for this side. This part of the house exists. So, he's actually taking out a window, but he's moving it in and he's placed it somewhat symmetrically to the other window. These windows up here are added up top. This window was placed so that it would be over the top of this to provide a little bit of symmetry. And this double window is simply to get as much light as possible in and to provide as much architectural relief. Also on this elevation, which differences from the last time, there's a pine line, if you will, although it's a James Hardy product, um, that goes across. To add some architectural detail for this and to actually frame the second floor. The rear elevation, uh, nobody really had a lot to say about it at the last meeting, but he does provide a lighting detail over the French doors. And now what he's doing here is he's got a deck that's scheduled to go the entire length, which gives a little bit more stability and a little bit of, uh, a little bit, uh, somewhere. You can at least see what he's planning for exiting the building with both sets of doors, which was not available on the last plan. Again, dimensional shingles, significant amount of windows, fenestration and a roof over the back door with a bracket system. Which will help keep the back door sheltered in inclement weather. The left side elevation, at this point in time, he's added the window here, which was not there on the last incarnation. And what he's tried to do is that even though this was not part of the new construction wall, he did add this window and then he's got three walls over here. So that there, or three windows rather, over here with the same gable detail with the framing as was in the previous on the other side. He's added a landscape plan and one of the importances of adding the landscape plan was to kind of allow the, uh, commission to see what it was that he was actually going to do here. In the front of the house, when you take a look at what he has here, again, he's detailed the sod, but now he's got planting beds that show on the front of the house. And those areas that will be affected will be right here. Those are the planting beds area here and here. And that along with the window size, gives the windows changes, the window size changes, gives a more enhanced appearance to the front of the house. In the rear of the house, he's framing the deck with Arbor Vitae's and different types of plans, which was something that we didn't have from Mr. Lederman in the past. So now you have a little bit better idea of what the project entails. Previous concerns of the planning commission were that they were turning a bungalow into a colonial. There really had been no new construction projects applying for bungalows. The proposed style is consistent with projects previously approved in the city. The plan, it this way, is respectful of the pervious surface concerns by not taking up any larger footprint than already exists, with the exception of a deck which does drain. There are several close by incidences where the style of the house has been altered. This is three houses away across Lincoln. This is across the street, as is that in the same neighborhood. Both these two houses are on ALAR currently. Most of the last projects approved by the planning commission have been colonials and here's some examples of some of the projects that have been included. Including one that is, are, that is currently under construction. So, colonials are not foreign. And if you take a look back at what has been approved by the planning commission, it's been mostly colonials, except for a couple exciting projects that we had. One was a ranch and another one was another style of mid-century modern with Bauhaus influence. Some of the other previous concerns were window styles, locations and sizing. The revised plan shows larger windows with a higher degree of concern to proportion. The windows have been added to the si- a window has been added to the side elevation to address the blank wall concerns that were on that side, even though the wall wasn't originally going to be touched. Another concern that the planning commission has was the details or lack of them. The new plan reflects new details such as material clarifications, which was substantially lacking on the last plan. Excuse me, an exterior lighting plan and a landscape plan. A deck is also included on the rear elevation and the sides show more details as well. If you have any questions on this in any way, shape or form, I'm sure Mr. Lederman or myself, to the extent that I can, would be happy to answer them for you. Thank you.
Thanks, Hank. Public participation and any comments from the public on, uh, this application? Public, yeah?
Uh, just one question. How does that compare in size to the original?
Before the question is answered, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Uh, Gloria Sidal, one oh four five Fairmount.
Okay. Wha- wha- Hank, do you wanna answer the question or?
There's no change.
Cause one of your concerns last month was that the size was large compared to the house on the, to the right of this, which is a bungalow.
Yeah, so that's different than whether, you know, what, what the change in the size is in terms of the footprint, but I, I understand your point. Um, Hank?
Yeah, uh, just for the clarification on this, is it, uh, Mr. Lederman is well under his maximum house size and lock coverage?
Okay, um, any further public participation comments? Sir?
Uh, Greg, over about two six zero zero nine ALAR, in the house right to the right.
Okay.
So, just for clarification, there's no change in the footprint of the house. It's just everything's going up. Elevation wise, it's just getting taller.
Yeah, that's exactly true, yes.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have plans, but how much taller than my house is it going to be?
Well, the height of this house is going to be twenty-five feet, two inches. It can be a maximum of thirty feet. Uh, anything over twenty-six feet would require some additional step in and he's under that. So, twenty-five feet, two inches is going to be the height of the house at the peak.
And Hank, what's the, what's the height of a typical bungalow? Cause I think you want to compare.
Height of a typical bungalow is twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two feet tops. Some as low as nineteen, but most bungalows typically, anywhere between like eighteen and twenty-two is typical for that.
Any other comments, concerns, questions? Okay, public participation's closed. We'll start with the mayor.
Uh, I appreciate the detail that he's added to the, uh, to the plan. Uh, I still think, uh, on the front elevation, it would be, uh, easier to see more brick. Other than that, I prefer the rest of the commission.
Sheldon?
Yeah, uh, I also wanna hear the comments from the rest of the commission. I'm, I'm kinda torn by this thing. I do appreciate the additional effort that's going in with him. And I also appreciate the, the showing us other houses and, um, and, and that sort of thing. I'm not so sure that brick on the second elevation would make this fit any better into the neighborhood, given what's there already. Uh, my comment last time was, it's a perfectly nice house in the wrong place, at least in terms of fitting into the neighborhood. On the other hand, I'm, I'm trying to be realistic and appreciate the investment that's going in and, um, to be practical about the fact that. Bungalows just aren't, aren't, aren't the program anymore, okay? Um, and the fact that he could bulldoze the house and start from scratch, if that's what he chose to do. I'm still not sure that would satisfy the problem of fitting in, you know, fitting into the neighborhood. Like I said, I, I do very much appreciate the fact that he's, he's paid attention and listened to us. Um, and, and a good deal of the details that have been added make this a much more palatable, um, proposal than, than at least as far as I'm concerned that you saw last time. Um, but I'm still struggling with the fact of what's, what else is in the neighborhood. That's where I.
Thanks, Sheldon. Mike?
Uh, I'd agree with Sheldon. It's, uh, I, I do appreciate the extra details, but it, it still looks very flat to me.
What do you mean flat?
Uh, there's no dimension on the front of the house. It's, uh, you know, other than that, that little, uh, bumped out porch, uh, the front elevation just is, is sort of boring. I, I don't know that it fits, uh, what's going on around there. It, uh, it lacks detail, lacks originality.
Joe?
Um, first question is, you say you're putting a deck on the back. How wide exactly is that deck? I mean, coming out from the house, just out of curiosity, it looks smaller than the front porch. Is there, is it just this very, is it foots, is it two feet? This, this looks very, very thin to me and I'm just curious, what's the purpose of this?
Well, it, it's the deck, I, I don't know the dimensions, I'm out there, but, uh, you know, which is, the width, uh, is, uh, um, four. Four feet is.
Four. If it comes out a minimum of four, that's what you gotta have for your door swing, so.
So, it's essentially a little four-foot strip across the back of the house. You can't.
We, we, yeah, and that's something.
So, it's not meant to be like a deck that someone would sit and relax and barbecue on or anything like that. It's just.
That could be an increase.
I, I, no, I'm not complaining. I'm, I'm just asking. I, I'm just, I'm, I'm.
Such a good point.
Merely pointing out that it, it seems as though this little strip of wood being put up the back of the house, um, as a means to step down from the door. And I, I find it to be a little, I don't see what use it's going to have really, a little four-foot strip. I'm not sure you can put a chair and a person on it. Um, so I don't really see it as a deck. I see it as just a platform kind of thing. Um, I appreciate you adding the windows to it, to the house. My concern, um, last time was changing a bungalow to a colonial. I understand that we don't necessarily build bungalows anymore. I do understand that, but I agree with Mike and my comments last time that it is very plain vanilla. Um, I don't necessarily think that bricking the second floor will improve it any. I think it will make it look more like a brick box, which is essentially what it is. It's a box. Um, I appreciate, th- though, that being said, I appreciate that you're not expanding the footprint of it anymore. But it's still, you've added things like light fixtures and a different door. To me, those aren't necessarily architectural details of the house. So, it's just. Again, it's just, it's very plain vanilla. It doesn't ha- it doesn't have a lot of inspiration and I don't, again, I agree, Sheldon, it's, it's, uh, it's a, it's fine as a house. But it's not adding to the neighborhood necessarily. That's just my comment.
Martha?
Um, first I wanna thank you very much for listening to what we had to say last time. Uh, I appreciate your, um, taking those comments and also working closely with Hank. And I think this is a much better design than the first one you introduced us to. Uh, I still have my concerns too, as, as do the other members about going from a bungalow to a colonial. Um, and I understand, you know, neighbors would be concerned because of the massing that colonials have versus a bungalow, which has that, that roof that kinda leads up. And you can add out to the back of a bungalow very easily and expand the size of the house without anybody ever knowing from the curb. Um, if you're gonna go for a colonial, I'm gonna suggest that you choose a different door, cause this kind of doesn't look like a colonial design. And if you really wanna colonial, you might wanna choose a different porch. Or, um, really your surround around the window, I mean, traditionally should be some kind of wood framing that has, um, I don't know the proper terms for it. But there's like little, um, circular things at the top of like a, like a pedestal kind of design and, um, uh, this. And, and that's where the vanilla comes from. It's just very plain. You've got bricks and you've got a door. And you could do so much more with the doorway to enhance it and make it look like colonial, like, oh, I know this is a colonial, okay? And, and those are little nuances that really, uh, create the curb appeal and sell the house, uh, not only to the neighborhood or to your prospective buyer. Um, you can go a long ways in terms of, um, adding to the nuances of the house by doing those kinds of things. I'm sorry, I didn't bring my little book of, of architectural styles with me this week. I actually had it with me last week. But, um, um, there, I mean, I have a colonial and, and my neighbor down the block has one as well. And we have, you know, underneath the vinyl siding that my mom put on there, um, or actually it's aluminum. There's a beautiful wooden, um, decorative motif that goes all the way around the house and it's a very traditional colonial design. Um, that, um, you can probably do relatively easily if you went up to the hardware store and looked at some of what they have. Um, I'm, I'm torn, you know, I, I appreciate what you've done. I just, it, it breaks my heart to see the bun- bungalows go away. Because they have, um, a purpose in our community, which we strive to keep, um, multi, um, socio-economic, you know? If we don't have starter homes for people to move into with small children, then pretty soon we don't have children at all in Huntington Woods. And that changes the dynamics tremendously. Um, and, and people around Huntington Woods have been able to add on to their bungalows in a way. That still provides all the space that a family, um, needs. So, that's, I think, why we keep drumming that same drum for you. So, um, I'm, I'm torn. At this point, I, I don't know what else to say. Uh, but I do thank you very much, cause I think you really have come a long way in terms of your design with this. Um.
Sir?
Um, I agree with most of what everyone else has already said. Um, it's unfortunate that this is, I think, the second time on this property. And on the other property, I think we had three or four visits before there was a plan presented that, um, at least kind of met everyone's, um, satisfaction to some degree. Uh, it's fairly plain, but understanding what you're doing, I at least appreciate that you're not maxing this out.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's well below the maximum house size, which I think is an important consideration. And, uh, Hank's presentation was definitely helpful in, um, fully understanding the area around and, um, the other houses where similar changes have been made.
Aaron?
Um, I apologize, I'm at a bit of a disadvantage. I wasn't in attendance last month. I'm still struggling to understand the material. Um, I'm not sure that brick would make it look better, but I tend to be the rule follower type. So, if there is a more case, a more clear case for when a second story should be brick, I'm not sure where it is. It can be done so easily here. Um, and I, I agree with everything that's been said so far. Under, a little bit underwhelmed, I guess.
Kim?
I think I'll echo, uh, other commissioners. I do appreciate that you have worked with Hank and, uh, responded to our concerns. Um, it, it does remain that one of the standards is not changing the, the type of the structure and that's a radical change, um, to go from bungalow to colonial. So, to do that, I think you really need to kinda knock it out of the park to exceed expectations in order to make an exception like that. I, I remain torn.
Thank you. Um, I am not torn, uh, only because we were, as a body, emphatic that we felt very uncomfortable with the change from bungalow to colonial. I think one of the reasons why the people are having trouble envisaging a, uh, uh, an upper floor that is not brick is because this is an unnatural fit. Uh, that the, uh, guidelines, uh, don't really contemplate this vis a vis the use of brick or anything else. And therefore, uh, it, it does look awkward and unusual because you're trying to do something that's not within the guidelines themselves. Uh, and. Uh, and on cognizant of that, I still think we're creating something, notwithstanding all your efforts to, uh, listen to the other comments that we made, but not the major one, uh, which we appreciate. We're going in the direction of, uh, creating something that, again, has a great likelihood of being awkward and inconsistent with the rest of the neighborhood or the, the houses at least immediately nearby. Um, and I guess my final comment would be, uh, I personally am not, uh, concerned about what the commission did at some time in the past in terms of allowing, uh, additions that go from one type of house to the noth- to, to another. I don't know what years the pictures, what years the houses, uh, that you were showing us, uh, were changed. Uh, I personally don't remember allowing changes like this since I've been on the board, if my memory fails, may I apologize? Uh, but I, I just, um, uh, can't do it. And notwithstanding, again, the changes, I, I think you bought a house, uh, you bought a house knowing that the guidelines, or presumably you should have known that the guidelines prevented what you're trying to do. And at this point, I just don't feel comfortable making this accommodation, for maybe the reason that Kim said, that if we're gonna bend way over backwards to do something, it's gotta be something that justifies disregarding very, very unambiguous, um, uh, guidelines that I think, you know, have to guide us. Uh, because I don't wanna be the type of commissioner who does things exercising own discretion when there's a rule that says no. Uh, so that's my comment. Uh, does anyone have any other comments before there's a motion?
I, I guess I do, um, I, I agree with all of that and that's why I, why I am torn. And I think a couple of commissioners alluded to it is that, um, we could deny this plan tonight. And Mr. Liederman could come back, raise this house and present a new plan that is even less, I guess it's just as underwhelming or, and that fits within all the guidelines by building new construction.
He could.
And, and I guess we can take that risk or.
Or he could, or he could ex- expand the footprint, uh, by doing what Martha suggested, um.
Or extending the size. There's a number of ways to go about it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we box him in too much, wha- wha- what I at least am saying is, you, you can't just violate with impunity the regulations and the guidelines that state, don't do this, and I just don't feel comfortable with it, so.
Mr. Chairman, could I just ask a question for clarification? He's gonna need, if you're gonna deny this tonight, he's gonna need somebody to define what knock it out of the park is.
Well, from my perspective, uh, I think he, I don't like the term, with all due respect, knock it out of the park, 'cause that suggests that, at least in my mind, there's a willingness to entertain, um, you know, going from one style to another style. I think the safer thing to do is, um, that's not something that should be done. And if you want to add to this house, do it in a way that are con- in a, that, in a way that's contemplated by the guidelines. I'm not gonna try and define what knock it out of the park means.
Okay, and I just wanna clarify that the pictures that were shown were all done except for one that I can't substantiate, but all of them were done since two thousand and fourteen.
And that went from one style to another, was it something that was pointed out?
The one that went right, the one that right across from Lincoln was approved within the last year.
Which one?
The one on Lincoln was approved within the last year.
You know, went from.
Went from a ranch to a colonial.
Yep.
I just wanna point out because.
Yeah, fair enough, that's good to know, that's good to know. I, I, I would like to revisit that one in my mind to see what happened, but, uh, thank you. Sheldon?
I, I remember that, that discussion, and it's, it's sort of like, at a right angle to this particular house, I think it's the end of the band door.
That's correct.
The corridor, there's like three houses in a row, and it was, and they were ranches, there was nothing to do with them if you wanted to expand because the footprint was already close to maxed out or something near it.
And they had steroids for that.
And the only thing they could do was go up.
Yeah.
In, in those circumstances, and we struggled with that too.
So here. And here's where there's a viable alternative.
I understand that, but, I, I mean, here's, here's, here's my say so, there, there, we have, um. We have been willing to accommodate this kind of a conversion, as, as, as was pointed out by a couple of examples in the city, including one that's right there practically next to it. Uh, on the, uh, uh, Lincoln block, that, uh, the one I just referred to. Um, and I think, it, it, when I think about the alternatives that are here, um, I'm not sure that we can give him guidance other than perhaps what Martha said about blowing it out the backside, okay? It, but I, I also don't wanna be in a position designing a house, that, I mean, he's, you know, uh, um, whether he's the homeowner or, as in Mr. Williams' case, somebody who's selling it, trying to improve it and, and put it on the market, or maybe he's got a buyer right ahead of him, doesn't make any difference. Um, I, this one does not strike me as being such a dramatic departure or a market departure or that offensive to the guidelines. Yes, I know we had that one guideline, um, but, uh, that says you shouldn't revert from need to be. I think this is not exactly new territory, I think it is an appropriate house for the place, and he's paid attention and tried very hard to accommodate the comments that were made. It's still a conversion, I can't do anything about that. But I also suggest, i- in terms of knocking it out of the park, I'm not suggesting that you duplicate that house. The, the house that's the, that's maybe the Metacris, okay, which we approved last month violates a number of guidelines. Um, in terms of its ability, but it was, it's very striking, it's consistent with the house that was there before. But it is certainly not consistent with what else is in the neighborhood, so, uh.
Just a ball house.
Yeah, yeah, the ball house, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, so I'm suggesting that being, um, a little too rigid about that is, is something that I don't think is appropriate in this particular circumstance. It's a, it's a one-by-one evaluation, that's my story, I'd be willing to approve this house.
Okay.
As, as presented, and I just wanted to, you asked for comments.
That's fair, great, or, you know, Pam, I mean Pam.
Pam?
Sorry.
Yeah.
No, it was my, 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 no, I did it again, second time in a month.
I have less, um, heartburn with this house going from a bungalow to a colonial than I would with him taking the bungalow, blowing out the back and doubling the side of the house and making a bigger footprint. I have less heartburn with this than I would with that, to be honest.
Why?
Because I don't like to see the lots both big-footed, and I like to see yard.
Okay.
Um, when we talk about, and this is just a personal comment, when Kim talked about knocking it out of the park. For me, what I would like to see, and this is, again, just a personal opinion, there are many beautiful brick colonials in this, in this neighborhood. Very pretty ones, that are in the style, in keeping with the style of how this neighborhood was built. And I think that, as, as, um, as another commissioner stated, this is a perfect house to do the second floor in brick. But, but I, I wouldn't want it, to see it become that brick box like one of the other ones that you showed, which was a new build. Which, which is a brick box with a couple porches or a little change in roofs just pasted on the front. I think it would be lovely if you were redoing this house to make it look as though it had always been there as a brick colonial in Huntington Woods. In the styles that we have on all of our streets, that if you took into account the type of architecture and the type of colonial decoration that is on so many of the homes that were originally here, and take this house and turn it into a colonial that looks as though it were built in the year this house would have been built, but as a colonial. That, that's my opinion.
Joe Pamper, P.A.M., mind freezing.
I am.
I know, but that's enough, but.
Oh, that's with a Pam Camp, oh, got it.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's, that's my opinion, so, you know, you were, you were asking about what does it mean to knock it out of the park? My personal opinion for knocking it out of the park is renovate this house to look as if it were built as a brick colonial in the thirties or forties as so many of our colonials were, that's my opinion.
Any other comments before I ask for a motion?
So I guess I'm struggling with, right, we talked about this, we talked about the other houses, we talked about the exceptions to the standard, standards. And normally, and while I've seen a few approved, right, normally they, they are, there is a guiding reason for it, right? You don't do brick on the second floor because it's, would be prohibitively expensive architecturally.
Well, it's a foundation.
Right. Foundation, you have to add a steel beam, whatever the case may be, right? We don't change styles unless it's the only way to accommodate expansion. And I just, I'm, I'm struggling with what is guiding us to violate standards for this house. That's, I just, I'm not sure I see that.
That's my main concern.
Right, and I feel like when it's been done in the past, we.
There's been a reason for it.
We've had a reason to get there.
But there's already brick on the second floor because it's a brick bungalow, so, so they're actually removing brick.
So does anyone wanna make a motion?
Could I respond to, uh, any?
Sure.
Uh, first of all, um, the colonials, the, the house is a, a three-bedroom house, so we, we, you know, the, the clients probably for this house aren't going to be with children. You know, so as far as your point about the, uh, not a candy family, so for young kids, this is a market for that type of a family. Uh, second of all, what we did with the, the house to make it as consistent and to blend in as much with the street and the neighborhood is the overall sign, is the overall footprint of the home. Uh, were there more bells and whistles, uh, that we could have put on the house, the possibility, but we really didn't feel that they really would have been appropriate for that street given the, uh, nature of the existing houses around there, other than the, uh, few colonials that have been renovated. So in a sense, we sort of like downplayed, uh, some of these things, so it would not stick out like a sore thumb on the street given the amount of bungalows that are on there. So we, we looked at that, we tried to improve the quality of the materials, uh, again, we went through all, Sheldon, wood windows, we increased the sizes. We took out all the, uh, existing, uh, you know, made, uh, hardy cement siding with cement board on there, dimensional shingles. Uh, we kept the existing size of the covered porch, not going to be overcommanded with too many bells and whistles. Uh, so we did consider that, and we, we did have some options with, with, um, a more, uh, architectural features and gables, uh, on the roof pitches and reverse gables and full porches all the way to the front and, uh, columns, uh, that to, to us, we did feel would be appropriate for that street. So we did try, you know, to make this blend in as much as we possibly can, uh, in, in this street and in this neighborhood that we possibly can by upgrading materials, keeping the footprint the same, keeping the square footage the same. We don't have a twenty-six hundred square foot colonial, uh, we don't have maximum roof height. So we did take all that into consideration when we thought of designing the architect.
Thank you.
And one other thing is, in our opinion of the other options, we, we just, we don't feel there are any viable options without, uh, making extensive, uh, changes to the footprint, the open space, the green space. Uh, so our options really, uh, if we can't get what we're planning to prove basically, would be either to go back and expand the footprint of open space and the green space of this lot, uh, dramatically, uh, or really knocking it down and coming back with, with a new construction. I mean, that's really the only options we have, but as far as keeping the bungalow, the, the way it is without doing sun, because the footprint of the house is really like a thousand square feet, and there's no sunroom in the back, there's no room there that we could build on top of an existing structure. It's a very limited, uh, square footage. So without doing some dramatic renovations, uh, other than this, this really is, is the only option that we feel that we have. Uh, and, and by tapering down the elevation of the house is more consistent with what's on the street.
Thank you.
We feel that's the best option.
Thank you. Anyone want to make a motion?
Who to approve is presented?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve as presented, say aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five. All those opposed? One, two, three, four, five to four, passes. That's a vote? Yeah, what, what, I'm surprised you went there. No, no.
Fair enough.
I, I just, I just wasn't gonna, I wasn't gonna go there. I just, he hit it right on the nose that. Okay, Ben, um, next one item up is, uh, Heller and Associates for an addition to the leader residence at two six four five seven Huntington.
Okay. Good evening, I'm representing, uh, David and Reagan Winger this evening, uh, thank you for your time. Uh, I think the best thing with this private baby is to first kind of, 'cause sometimes with the renovations, it's hard for, for the board, just looking at the plans initially to understand exactly the scope of the project. And I think you guys will see this is a very, very modest, uh, addition, uh, there's actually two additions that we're looking to add on to the home. And just kind of maybe just walking through the existing a little bit might help. Um, everyone's familiar with the house, it's a large lot, corner lot, and, um, we have the side street, and then, of course, we've got the Huntington side. And so essentially, what is happening is we're adding a small addition off the garage side, uh, coming out of just a little over three feet. And then across the back of the home, you can see there is a shed dormer here now, but it's, it's kind of set in quite a bit from the sides. And we're trying to, to get the three bedrooms up there without having to increase the footprint anymore. And so essentially, we're staying under the ridge, behind the gables on both ends, and basically reconstructing the shed dormer to allow for the bedrooms upstairs, but keeping that much like it is, and then the rest of the project is all within the existing, 'cause they really like the way the home looks now. We're trying to keep the home the way it sits on the lot, the way that it feels, it's gonna feel that way in the future. Um, and so with this project, we're, you know, this is another one of those corner lots where we have a pre-existing non-conforming condition. Um, the proposed project is under the square footage, it's under the lot coverage, uh, we're well under the lot coverage, but because the house is set so far back to the rear of the lot, and because it's a corner lot, the, the rear setback or the side setback as it would be because it's a corner lot, you know, cuts through the house. So any alterations basically puts us in a position where we're gonna have to go for a variance. Um, this all kind of came about because the, if you'll notice on the plans, that the garage is, is quite a bit down. Like I think it's seven steps or six steps down from the house, right? So we have a short staircase in the garage, and so when you pull your car in, on one of the car, where, where the car positions, you only have about seventeen and a half feet to park a car, which you can just barely get your car in there and close the garage. And sometimes it's, it's, you can't walk around, you can't get behind the car or in front of the car, it's kind of a fire hazard almost. So what we're trying to do is essentially deepen the garage so that we can park a car in there and not alter the way the house looks at all in the process. Um, and, and what you'll notice is that we are staying in with all the lines of the existing house, and the distance that we are actually from the side yard is within the setback on the side yard. So the, the encroachment is really has to do with that, you know, the, the rear lot not being a rear lot, being a side yard and pushing that setback line forward. So we're still maintaining, you know, so, again, just talking hard numbers, on, on the side yard, we need to be fourteen, uh, point five five feet from the property line. And after we build the addition, we are still sixteen feet from the property line. And we made, made sure that we still had eighteen feet before the garage so that someone can park there. So we're really trying to make this as modest of an addition as possible, but accomplish the, the goal of solving the problem of not having a garage that's really practical and, and that is actually quite dangerous. Um, and so then the other part of the project is simply just adding that shed dormer, sticking with the way the roof lines really wasn't hard to us to keep the home looking like it does from the street. Uh, we are planning on changing the front entry system, putting in a new mahogany entry system, and side lights, and just a beautiful front door, that'd be a piece of art. Uh, but it'll work with the house, it'll be kind of a mid-century feel to it. Um, so there's that. Um, so there's that component, and then the other, the other part of the project that we are, and we have on our proposal here, has to do with our, with the problem with this driveway, and, um, as it turns out, there, uh, the parents have, they have aged parents and they're trying to, have they moved into the house, they're looking at how they've been getting them into the house. Certainly, in the winter months, you're bringing them across the front lawn to bring people into the front door with the four steps in the back. And the other issue that we have that's unique about this property is that we happen to be on two fire lane rows. So nobody can park on the street, so we kind of have two issues. One is a, you know, just where do people park when they come over, uh, and then two is getting into the house. Um, and so the other part of this project is we are requesting to be able to add, uh, a, a drive to be able to get across the front. And we realize in this zoning, it happens to not be, it happens to not be allowed. It, it happens to be allowed across the street and on the other homes that are, that are bordering them on that corner. Um, but basically, if you look at the plat of their neighborhood, you'll see that it, it's literally a big pie with, uh, the Leder's lot being a huge lot and then the pie going all the way down to the end. And so the size of their lot is similar to lots across the street and on the other corners that are allowed to have circle drives. Why? Because they have the ample space to make it work. And the, the front of the house is so far from the street that you almost need that for your neighbors, for your guests to be able to approach the house. So, um, so that's, you know, that's what, that's where we came up with, uh, this request. And so we have these, these three areas, and I will turn it over to Hank for, to add, uh, his part and ask any questions.
Thank you. Um, I do want to show, uh, part of the PowerPoint because it, it kind of alludes to a few things that Mr. Heller's got going on. And this is, for once, I mean, one of my fondest wishes is that he, for once, gets a normal lot to deal with. But having said that, um, where we're at with this is, uh, let's see. There we go. Okay, so I wanted to show a couple of things because originally you had a, uh, survey that showed a little bit different. This is the front of the house off of Huntington, and you can see how far back it is. This is the site plan that was originally proposed for the house, and it showed the walkway that you had here. And it's interesting that the walkway provided walking space in almost exactly the configuration that he wants to put the driveway. Here's the issues that Mr. Heller has in his design. When you have a look at this, and, and I went, we actually took a drive and we went out to see, well, how do we deal with parking at this particular house? So as a result, the parking on this part of the street is a fire lane, so it's only one area that you can have. So when you take a look at it, you can't park cars here, and you can't park cars here because those are fire lanes. So as a result, what he's got is a proposal for a through, not a semi-circle, but from one street to the other street. And the premise for that is, is that there's no place to put cars. If you take a look at the rear yard, the rear setback line for this house, the garage is already in it and it's attached. So there's nothing about the structure that conforms. The interior architecture with the steps mean you either do one of two things. You figure out another way or an elevator to get from one floor to the other, or you enhance the front of it with a slight addition in order to get a vehicle. A typical sparking, parking space is nine by twenty. When you pull into a, uh, I was gonna say Wrigley's and date myself, but when you pull into like a, a Farmer Jax now. But when you pull into any one of these retail stores, Myers or anything like that, you typically get like an eight by twenty space. And the reason is, is because that's what they deem the minimum space necessary to effectively pull a vehicle in and out. Mr. Heller was not going to be able to do that with the vehicle. And if you had a larger vehicle, he wasn't going to be able to fit it in and shut the garage door. And typically what happens is, is that if you pull a larger vehicle in, you would have had to pull it in on the other side, but then that precludes them from getting two larger vehicles. What he did was, is that he kept it back far enough so that you had eighteen feet from the sidewalk. Typically, they want eighteen feet so that the car can park outside the garage, giving them four spaces. So that was where the eighteen feet came from. When we do an attached garage in any part of Huntington Woods, you have to have a minimum of eighteen feet so that you can park vehicles in front of the garage door. So what did he really gain by doing this? He gained the two spaces, which admittedly he already had, but he gained the four space in the garage, which he really didn't have because of the stairway. So having said that, the construction is still in the rear yard, so that's gonna need a variance for that. This one here, the history behind the, uh, the types of architecture that allow for those, uh, semi-circle spaces, they're relegated now currently to the R one A district. Even the district where Mr. Heller is pointing out that they have them, and admittedly, there's quite a few of them, they're no longer allowed. And the reason for that was, is that they wanted lots that were a hundred and sixty-two feet wide with a minimum of a forty-foot setback to allow for a radius turn there. So what Mr. Heller has done here is he said, well, I don't have the hundred and sixty-two feet, yet I still need to accommodate these vehicles. I have one of the largest lots in the neighborhood, so how can I best do that? And as a result, we see an entrance or egress off of Borgman, um, and a, and a Huntington, and a Huntington entrance. So what's gonna happen there is, is that he doesn't have to make that radius curve so tight because the lot is small. So the variance that he's gonna need, actually with this, is gonna be twofold. Uh, you have to have, and the parking space is required, a circular driveway can be permitted in the front yard, but only if one of the two following criteria is met. The lot is in the R one A zone district and has a lot width of at least a hundred and fifty feet, a front yard depth of at least forty feet, which he has, and the total driveway area straight plus semi-circle driveway does not occupy more than twenty-five percent of the front yard, which it does not. So ideally, what happens here, he's got a situation that he's going to be asking the zoning board of appeal, assuming your approval subject to the zoning board of appeals, for the driveway. Uh, and the practical difficulty or hardship is because of the fire lanes, the configuration of the lot, uh, the configuration of the streets on the lot, and, uh, the way that he doesn't have any other viable options to park any guests, meaning he could only have two people over if he parked two cars in the driveway, um, he needs some relief. So that would go to the zoning board of appeals based on that. As far as the rear yard, there's really nothing that he can do except add space to the front of that garage. So by doing so, he sets himself up to accommodate the vehicles and still make a smooth transition from the existing house, which is admittedly higher than the garage floor, down to the garage floor. So when you take a look at this here, and I, I, he showed you his elevations on his boards, uh, but this kind of gives you a little bit of an idea of what it is that you're looking at here. So this is the garage face that you have on the side, and this is just simply gonna be about three feet further towards the side street. Really all that's gonna be. And when you take a look at this, this kind of shows you the difference of, of what the elevations are gonna be. He does have a floor plan here, which I don't know that the relevance is really, um, extreme for any of this because the rest of it really kind of does tend to meet everything that you would do for a normal plan to take a look at. But realistically, if you do have any questions, Mr. Heller or myself, I'm certain would be happy to answer them for you. Um, it's kind of a strange situation, but, um, at least from our, our staff review point, we felt that Mr. Heller's made some viable options.
Hank, can I ask a?
Yeah.
Question to clarify?
Yeah.
The new driveway, we'll call it, the circular driveway.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that something that we need to approve, or can that be approved by the zoning board?
It could be approved, it ultimately has to go to the zoning board of appeals. But typically, semi-circle driveways, even in the R one A district, would be approved by the planning commission first. So basically, what you'd be asked to be doing here tonight would be to approve the plan subject to ZBA approval of the, of the, uh, needed variances.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any public participation? Open and closed, uh, we'll start with Kim.
Is, is that the only thing that's under consideration, Hank, or is there, is there anything else?
No, the concern was for the driveway, and the concern was also because the construction is happening in the required rear yard. The house as it sits right now currently, if you take a look at it, it's really kind of awkwardly situated. Here they had this huge lot, they situated the house a few feet off the back plot line. So that, that's, that's what happened, and as a result, um, what, uh, the intent was in, in my conversations with Mr. Heller, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ben, was that the, they wanted to alleviate the problems that they had with the garage, the closing of the garage, the access egress and ingress into the house from the garage, and yet have a marginal impact on the exterior of the house, which they felt was actually very nicely laid out.
Yep, that is, that is the goal, is to not alter the, the house looks really nice on the outside, so we're matching all the overhang details that are on that front hip roof on the corner. It has a, a wood soffit, we're gonna match that and step that all the way around. If you notice on the elevation, I raised, we're doing, because the face is so high, high, the overhang, if you look at the side elevation, we raised the garage door up to nine feet, so they have a taller, you know, because the garage, there's all those stacks, the garage has a very high ceiling in it, and so that the garage door wasn't like a normal, like a normal garage door is seventy feet tall. You can get eight feet, but you can custom order as whatever you want. And so if you look on the elevation, you can see that we took it up to nine because it sits better in the face. I mean, very, as you know, we're really sensitive to the aesthetics of it, and so we really wanted to do something that didn't, that, when this is done, it'd be like, did they even add an addition? Didn't even alter anything, and, you know, it happens to be one of those odd lots again where, you know, he's, because of a corner lot, because of those requirements, it puts him into this situation where even though he's not over on square footage or over on lot coverage, um, we're here before, you know, we're, we're gonna have to go to ZBA also, as well as talk to you guys. Um, and, you know, there's, there's only, there's a garage to the, um, to the left of him when you're facing the side street, that's a garage, you know, a detached garage, then you have the, uh, the house that fronts the other side. Um, so there's really no one else that's really affected or blocks your view, and the, the street tapers away, so it gets, you know, it gets better for the next guy, even though he's, you know, adding on a little bit. So that was our goal.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, I don't, I think it's a reasonable solution to the problem.
Erin?
So I, I think I've understood the lot lines on these corners. Um, but you're saying essentially he's, he's further reducing the setback to the natural rear of the house. I don't know if it's actually the rear of the house, but it's written, but only because of the angle it comes across there, so it's taking a few inches more.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so, I don't have any issue with the proposed changes, it looks like it's blended very nicely. Um, as far as the driveway goes, it seems like a reasonable argument to make, and I'm willing to let that go to the ZBA to address.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David?
I agree with what Erin says, the, the changes to the house I've signed, but for some reason, the driveway gets me in pause. And I don't know why, but I'm satisfied enough to send it off to someone else's problem to consider.
Martha?
Um, I think it's a great solution, um, to the situation that they're in, and it's better to have the cars off the street than people having to cross the street or walk a great distance in order to get over there. They ought to be able to enjoy having company over without people traveling always to get, get to the house. So, um, it's tastefully done, um, and I think it's, it works well, so I'm happy to pass that part on to the ZBA as well.
Thank you, Jill?
I would like to compliment you on the ability to modify a house, but still make it look as if it was born that way. So that's what I wish everyone that came in here could do or would make an effort to do. Um, so I have no issues with the addition, and I understand the concept of the driveway, and I don't have a problem passing that on to the ZBA. So once again, thank you for doing an addition that looks like it's not an addition.
Uh, well, good job.
Kelly? I did.
Okay. That's my response to dynamic leadership. Um, is, uh?
Excuse me, I think I was just insulted right there. I'm sure that was an insult, but, uh, we'll move on.
Is the fire lane applied to both sides of the street, both Huntington and Borgman, is that correct? Or just the one side?
Just the one side. But the thing is, is that it's, it's, uh, the side of, it's, it's Leder, right? Not Leiter.
Oh, it's Leiter.
Oh, it is Leiter, okay, all right, thank you. Well, that's, uh, you know, and, and again, it happens to be the sides that border the property. So there's nothing is, that he can park out in front of his house, and even then, because of the limited amount of spaces, assuming two in the garage and two in front of it, that's four. Um, I don't even know how many people reside at this house, but a typical driveway in a fifty by one twenty-five lot holds seven to eight cars comfortably. You still have to do the Huntington Woods shuffle, but it holds that many vehicles. And Mr. Leiter doesn't have the same option, so therefore, um, Mr. Heller was charged with coming up with a different solution to this problem.
Yeah, okay. Um, I, I've got, like others, um, got no problem passing this on to the ZBA, other than, uh, pardon, approving this subject to the ZBA approval, I think all the implications are reasonable. Uh, the ZBA will make its own decisions on the hardships and.
Erin?
No further comments.
Uh, I agree with what everyone said, um, I don't know, and so I'm happy to let the ZBA take care of this, and again, thanks for your meticulous work as always. Uh, I'm not sure that it's that persuasive in terms of the fire lane issues because, um, I mean, I live in front of a fire lane, they just walk across the street, and I'm, I, I'm not saying this to, you know, be negative at all. There's a circular driver right across the street from me, and it's perfectly fine. Uh, so that's not it, I'm just making sure that that argument is as, it's as strong as you want it to be because everyone has to walk across the street, so just be careful.
Yeah, and I mean, I think in my, our thinking in this case is, you know, the purpose of the ZBA existing is, you know, to interpret the rules for kind of special conditions, and abnormal lots fall into that. And for me, the abnormalness of this lot is that it's such a deep, big front yard. And so, one, the extra drive, the reason not to have circle drives everywhere is all these beautiful little lots would be filled with these big driveways, but in this case, the proportion works. And the other side of it is kind of the hardship for the client is the distance that anybody has to come to even get to his front door, you know, and, and so in this case, it fits with the, and it's not a full circle, it's a half, so it's, it's a very modest. So I think the intent of, so that's kind of my, 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 where I'm gonna take it with them and hopefully get them to understand is that this happens to be one of those abnormal conditions where the intent of not having front driveways is not to have all this concrete everywhere, but we're gonna do this fabulous landscape with this that's gonna actually be a beautification.
I mean, just, look, I live two, three doors down. Uh, I'm simply saying, it doesn't pass my sniff, smell test in terms of the burden. I would focus more on the size of the lot and that it can easily accommodate the circular driveway rather than talking about hardship, uh, because I'm not sure how persuasive that is. Uh, that just, you know, my two cents on that.
I appreciate that.
Right, I live three doors down, and I always say, gotta turn around, guys, gotta turn around, and haven't had a problem in twenty years. So just be careful. Uh, in terms of how much you push that argument. Um, but with that, uh, anyone want to make a motion? Okay, so you'll second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Mr. Chairman, for clarification, that's subject to ZBA approval.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, it's unanimous?
You guys, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Um, next matter is the Nadine home, ten oh five five. Um, okay, yeah, the ten, ten oh five five.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm just gonna run through this. The applicant, uh, didn't, apparently didn't make it tonight, but, um, having said that, the reason that it's back before you, uh, is on the advice of the city attorney. They simply modified the garage in a very miniscule fashion, but it changed the footprint. So as a result, what they're looking for is they're just looking for the slight modification. If you take a look at the plan for the two-car garage, the rearmost portion that comes back to nine feet by seven point six seven feet the rearmost portion that comes back to nine feet by seven point six seven feet is simply all they're looking to add on to give them some space in the back of the garage. They're well with under the maximum house size, I did have the city engineer evaluate it, and he has zero problem with it. Um, the only reason it's come back and it was not an administrative change was because it was a footprint issue to it. So having said that, um, if it wasn't that the city attorney had advised to bring it back, it wouldn't even be here at all, and the building official would have made a change on the site with that. But having said that, and, uh, wanting to be, because of that, we did bring it back. I am unaware as to why they're not here, since they applied for it, but having said that, I do wanna give, uh, the benefit of hearing just the simple reasons of that, and then see what the pleasure of the planning commission is. It's not a big, it's, it's a very minor addition, we're looking at like fifty square feet.
I'm happy to proceed with this, is everyone else, even though no one's here? Okay, uh, public participation? None, we will close it therefore, uh, we'll start with the mayor.
No problems with this. Um, I, I don't have a problem with it, but I, I, I'm, I'm just sort of like uncomfortable with the, the, the tone is not being, I mean, it's your house, and it's important enough. I, I don't know if you've gotten any communication.
Uh, the only communication I've had was conversations with the architect. Um, I did have one, one somebody from the neighborhood come in and take a look at it, and their comment was, well, that's all it is, and then they said, I have nothing to add to that, so. There, other than that, I've had nobody come in, I've had like one person from the public, I've talked to, uh, Mister Mosey, who's the architect. Um, they didn't know it was on tonight, but realistically, with such a small addition, uh, such a small change, I don't know that it's worth tabling to another agenda where you're going to have more site plans and still have to revisit this. If it's the pleasure of the planning commission to approve it, if not, if, if it's the flavor that they wanted, you know, that they don't want to approve it, then my suggestion would be table it.
Alright, uh, I mean, this house is literally right across the street from you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, and I, and I don't have any problem with the addition that they want to make, since it's a side of the house that I can't see. Um, and, and it is pretty nominal, I'm just, uh, sort of like policy wise, I'm happy about the fact that the editor can show up and make his own proof.
Mike?
Uh, no issues.
Jill?
No issues.
Martha?
Well, the only question I have is, the last time that they were before us, there was still some question as to where the air conditioning unit would go, and I've not ever seen a letter from an extra neighbor's.
The air conditioner will go in the backyard unless it's a letter is obtained from the, uh, from the neighbor. At this point in time, I don't, I'm unaware that I have a letter from the neighbor. Um, if one turns up, they'll put it on the side, if not, they'll have to comply and put it in the rear yard.
Okay, because it's still, it's still on the side yard at this point.
Right, but that was, they were aware that, at the last meeting, they were made aware that that letter would be necessary for them to do that, so. Since they haven't even broke ground on this, and they wanted to clarify this prior to that, that'll be taken care of long before the air conditioning gets installed.
Anything else? David?
No issues.
Erin?
No issues.
Kim? No issues for me either, anyone wanna move?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Unanimous? Okay, uh, final site plan is one that was originally number five, but now it's the last one, uh, ten four two four Boardman.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, Mister Rizzi must have raced down from, from up north to be back, so I'll let him start, and if there's some questions, uh. I'll answer.
Anything else, sir? Okay, Hank?
Thank you. Um, the house comes back, uh, there were some details that they wanted some clarification on, and there were some things that Mister Rizzi did to enhance it. Uh, basically, I, I just wanna point out that, um, through the process and through revisiting this, uh, Mister Rizzi has been more than amenable to, uh, to making some modifications to this. The front elevation, if you can see the gable ends on the house on all sides now match and have been upgraded to have a shake pattern, James Hardy product. Uh, window has been added on the right side elevation, if I'm remembering. Actually, two windows at the back, so that that side balances out more from what was there. Again, even the gable on the garage has the shake siding, he's added a lighting detail for that. Um, he's also showing lighting detail on the front of the house, the garage area is bricked over the front. He's using a Hardy point, Hardy plank with the Hardy trim, and he's added rake boards across the top, so that there's some more architectural detail on each side. I do wanna point out that the house originally is a sided house, it's predominantly sided. So any brick that Mister Rizzi's put on the house, he's put on there because he thinks that it looks better, not because he's had to or been mandated by the ordinance. This could be a complete sided house. Uh, the chimney, as you see, which is a boxed Hardy plank chimney, the chimney exists like that right now. And, uh, otherwise, because the, the normal question would be is, why isn't it brick? Well, it's not brick because it isn't currently, and it doesn't function in that manner. On the back, on the left elevation, he still does have a boxed out chimney with the two three oh, three oh fixed windows on each side to allow for some natural light into the structure. On the rear elevation of the house, when you take a look at it, he has an ample amount of windows. Uh, he's got steps and railings shown, and what he's done is, is that he's shown all the window details, he's detailed everything, and that was one of the cautions of the planning commission was they weren't sure what was going where, and Mister Rizzi's clarified that currently. Again, um, he's added the windows on the right side elevation, he does have an existing window to remain, he's not taking it out on the top floor on the right-hand elevation. And other than that, there's really, what he's done is he's clarified, added windows, added siding details, added some more details with the Hardy plank board, clarified it, showing what material he's using, and he's showing where he's using it. So if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer it, or I'm sure Mister Rizzi or between us, we could certainly figure it out. So, if you have any questions, we're here.
I have a question on the, uh, the rear elevation, um, outside the slider. Is that just a one set of steps down, or is that eventually going to be a, a fork or anything? Is it just one for foot step down to the ground?
The existing home had a twenty by sixteen deck, and so we thought that at some point we would have a smaller, but companion deck to what we have today. Not quite as big as the homeless figure. Some form of deck in the rear, but at this point, since we hadn't decided, maybe I'd reuse the current deck to stay.
Public participation? Thanks, Hank, public participation's closed, uh, starting with you, Kim.
Thank you for responding to the questions that were closed by the motion last time. I was just looking through the notes from our meeting, and it, it appears to me that you've addressed any other questions or concerns that we did have.
Thank you, Kim. Erin?
Um, again, I was not present last meeting, so, sorry, I'm at a bit of a deficit on the discussion. Um, the only thing I can say, looking at it as first pass, is that the left elevation appears to be, I, I guess I'm more surprised that there was a window there, but I guess that is all existing brick in the space that would seem to need one. Uh, so the existing home, other than that, I have no comment.
Good.
No comments.
Martha?
Um, I agree with Erin, um, that on the left elevation, I'm looking for another window on the second floor to the left of the other two. You have a smaller one and a larger one. Um, and then in that area between the boxed-in chimney, uh, the two chimneys, um, I would like to see another window there, and that's, that's presently sided, correct? That's not, that's where you're gonna put the new brick, so, um, maybe there's an opportunity to do the same window treatment as you're doing on the front, front of the house.
There's a line of finding the old versus where the new is, there's a vertical line, it's a new.
Right, right. So, it just looks a little vacant there.
Do you, do you have any response to Martha's concern about, uh, the window situation on the left elevation?
Well, I guess, you're suggesting it should be in the area that's existing, or in the areas?
That's existing, um, directly below the smaller window that's on the second floor, on the left elevation.
That's our existing hall.
Okay. But on the second floor, towards the back, the new part we can build, that could probably be some of it.
The window that had been on the roof, we moved it rearward.
Say that again, sir.
The window that had been there on the second floor.
Uh-huh.
We moved it rearward, it's going towards the back of the home, not the street side, but the rear side moved the rearward as compared to what was submitted before.
Uh-huh.
As an added, a second window on the second floor.
Okay, I'm just responding to empty space, that's all. So.
You wanna go, Tim?
Sure, um, so I see you've, you've added some windows, but I have a question about, each side of the house seems to have different sized windows, there's no continuity. So like the rear has one size window, the right side has a different size window, the left side has yet a different size window, and the front has different sized windows. So there, there's no, there's, there's kind of a lack of consistency moving around the house, and I find that to be a little odd, um. And I just find it, I just find it to be just strange that, you know, each side, if you look at each side, the windows are one side, one size on here, one size on here, one size here, a different size here, there's no continuity going around the house. Um, I think the left elevation could still use more fenestration, um, I understand that you've shifted one or, I just think that it, there are, there's still a big, and I understand that this big expansive next to the chimney is the current house, but you are kind of busting into everything anyway. Um, and then also on that left of elevation on the top floor, there are those two small windows for that very long walk. And again, my, my main concern is that there seems to be no continuity on the size of the windows as you move around.
Is that it, Joe?
Um, that's, yeah, I think that's pretty much it.
Okay.
Mister? Mister Chairman, can I just, I, I just wanna point out one thing, because Mister Rizzi and I did have a conversation. On standard DD, where it says all elevations of the main building have the same materials in approximately the same proportions, matching windows, trim, and architectural details providing a three hundred sixty degree building finish. One of the codices for that is, is it says the style, sass, color, and proportions of new windows match the existing windows on the original building, unless the new windows are not visible from the street. So, I just wanna throw that out there, because there were some different angles, and there were staircases, and there were different things when Mister Rizzi was designing the windows, where the natural light was still paramount, but he wasn't able to fit in, uh, a different type of window, so, without redesigning the whole thing. So, that was paid attention to, and that was what the standard was looked at, um, when Mister Rizzi and I had, uh, or at least when he and I had some discussions, some thought process resulting with the windows. And that's why when he added on the left side, he shifted the window back and added in the second window on the top floor. It was because he had no intention of going into the first floor, so he wanted to put something else on that side to show that there was some architectural detail and some fenestration.
But he could have done two on that upper floor, and it, you know, you, you talk about consistency and three hundred sixty degree treatment and everything, and you talk about, well, there's this interior feature and that interior feature, but it dictates besides the windows. From what I remember, we are not necessarily concerning ourselves with the interior of the house, and how things are placed interior, but
No, and I understand that.
The outside, and I actually believe that the side of the house is visible from the street.
Okay, I just wanted to point that out because
I understand.
The, at this point, basically what the planning commission says and do is, in a house that exists without a window now, you're asking them to put a window in.
But I'm also asking that that upstairs on that left elevation is not existing.
That's fair, I just wanna make, I just wanna be sure.
And it's still, it's still a very blank wall. And, and like I said, we've talked about this on many houses that we've looked at, we aren't actually concerned with what's going on on the inside, and trying to place windows for allowing decoration on the inside, or, for lack of a better word.
Definitely, I'm just hearing your point, uh, Mike?
Uh, I would agree with both Martha and Jill, um, the, the left side just looks awkward, and, um, that, that's the best word I have for it, um, I think the front looks better than we saw, um, I also find it very odd with how many different windows are going on. Um, and they're like, they're sort of distinct from the first side of the house. It's not like we've got ten different kinds of windows mixed throughout, we've got window A on this side, window B on this side. Have you got anything else, Mike?
Sheldon?
Yeah, um, a couple things, um, I'm not as concerned with the fenestration, uh, it seemed reasonably consistent first side of the house. So, unless you're a walk from one side to another, and that's for sure, so it might be visible, but it's
Sorry.
Um, the other thing is, I noticed that, and, and I do appreciate the people's comments, uh, part in making the, uh, um, some of the changes that you've made. Um, I also note that we have, uh, Hank has forwarded to us a comment from, I think it's one of the neighbors at the base of the back end, concerned about encroachment or, or the proximity. Um, I note, at least from the plans I'm looking at, to the back of the house, the lot line is like fifty-two feet. So you can still put a substantial proximity within, um, permitted by, um, by ordinances and that sort of stuff, in terms of putting up a, uh, uh, some kind of a decked back there. I think, given that, at, at least what I'm looking at, you get fifty-two feet to the back of the lot, then at least what I'm seeing on the plans, the plot plan, there are garages immediately the other side of the, um, of the rear lot line, or given the, whatever, the abandoned alley or whatever it is back there. Um, and then you've got presumably at least thirty feet to the back of the house that's at, the houses that are at the rear. So, I, as far as I'm concerned, while I, I think Mister Samory for his comments, uh, I don't think that the, um, the proximity of the rear of the house and any decked maybe added on there is overwhelming as far as, uh, the neighbors at the rear. Nor do I think this house is out of line in terms of permitted size or anything like that, it's within guidelines. Um, as far as being dominant, as far as the rear, it's on a large lot, and, uh, uh, side lots and all the rest of that appear to be, um, often being respected, so, uh, you know, while I, while I appreciate the comments that have been made by the mayor and by the neighbors, I don't think there's any, uh, uh, my evaluation is that those have been properly accommodated as far as the plans are concerned, and I think it's a decent plan that, that I would vote in favor of as it sits.
Mayor?
I, I also appreciate the, uh, the concerns we pointed out last month and that you, uh, put forth on the plan. I don't, uh, have any issue with not having a window in the existing brick on the left elevation. I, I do believe on the second floor, uh, there would be lots of the plan to have a back I, I do believe on the second floor, uh, it would do lots of the plan to have a matching window on the other side of the, the left window.
Thank you. Um, you've heard several people, uh, talk about the left elevation, uh, toward the back of the house. Are you willing to put a matching window, uh, there in a proportional way? Just make sure that more people feel comfortable voting for approval?
Look, let me first say about window sizing, in that, given that there is an existing home there today, we're expanding, it's, it's difficult to try to have beautiful window sizes now.
Okay, my question is, I, I understand that.
So, that's, you just can't-
Yep.
Change something when it's-
I, I hear you on that. Can you put in another window on that left elevation towards the back of the house? That's matching in size as the mayor suggested?
Regarding that, the, the question based on the second floor, the left side. The second floor, I was questioning-
Yep, on the left, the left elevation.
Last time when we met, what, when, when you told us that the second window you put on the second floor. The second window has been placed on the second floor of the left side.
Okay.
As requested.
Right. When we're looking at the plans as newly presented, sir, there have been several people who have said that the left elevation still is, you know, still lacks sufficient windows. And so what I'm asking, in effort to make sure that this is approved, is whether the homeowner and you are willing to put in another window, uh, on the left elevation toward the rear on the second floor. Uh, I, I think that you've heard several people say that they're uncomfortable with the expanse without a window there. So, the question is, yea or nay? It's your choice.
My, yes, Mr. Chairman, if one other alternative might be, i- i- and I'm just throwing this out to move that window further back in the addition, so it, you don't have quite the same large expanse, it seems to be the issue.
Well, let me first ask the question that-
Okay, I'm just suggesting that is possible.
I understand, but I, I personally, uh, agree with the comments that there is an expanse there. I think a lot of people who are expressing ambivalence would feel comfortable if there were another window there. Is that something you could do or you don't want to do, and you won't do?
Well, I prefer not to.
Okay.
If I for, if I'm forced to, I'll do it.
Okay.
Then I'll take it out.
Then you'll-
After the home's built.
I'm sorry?
And then I will take it out after the home is built.
Excuse me?
I don't think you meant then, if you did mean that, that would be unfortunate.
Is it against the rule?
First of all, you are bound by contract, if you will, to do what you represent to us, that you-
Five years later?
Sir, you just hurt your credibility greatly. That is a comment that we have never heard. It was an implied threat. I don't respect it. I don't want to continue with this discussion at this point. So I'll take, if anyone wants a motion or to continue the conversation, uh, whatever people wanna do at this point. I posed a question. It was responded in a provocative and insulting way. Uh, I will-
We need to ask if we would do it.
No, no. And, and then, there was, I, I, yes, and if you say you prefer not to, that's fine. But then he added a gratuitous comment that he would change it after making a representation that he would do it, which is utterly unacceptable. I've never heard it before. I don't wanna countenance it, and I don't like it. Uh, does anyone wanna make a motion or move on in any way people feel appropriate?
Motion to deny.
You can't hear what Seth?
Motion to deny.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm confused why we're, why we're doing this.
Because, becau- well, I think the record will reflect what just happened. It was very inappropriate, in my opinion.
It was a simple question?
Oh, okay. Uh, you know what?
No, it wasn't a question. The answer was, if, if, do we need that for approval, then it says, then you said, I'll put it in and then I'll take it out after it's built. That's what you said.
Yeah, if you don't appreciate, sir, that that is wrong, then we've got a lot of other problems. That was an assault on the integrity of the decision-making of this panel. I don't think anyone respects it. The fact that we are asking you, and this is the second month in a row that we've asked you questions that we ask every homeowner who comes before us, and you've responded to those questions as if you're being greatly put out. It was an innocent question. I was trying to make sure that we could get approval in a way that is consistent with your and the homeowner's desires to get this project moving along. Rather than answer that question and then stop what you were entitled to do, you added a gratuitous comment to suggest that you were willing to make a representation, and then after, uh, you're finished with construction, undo something that is a basis of a decision-making. That is not appropriate, and if you can't see that that's not appropriate, I'm sorry. You, I won't say anything more. Does anyone, there's a motion pending. I'm not suggesting how that motion should be decided on or not, uh, but does anyone wanna discuss the motion?
I would suggest we ask the-
The motion is to deny.
Applicant, whether or not he's willing to build the house with, either, either put the window in or not put the window in, okay? Based simply on, on the questions that have been presented. And, because if the window is put in, it's expected to stay in. I leave it to Hank in terms of enforcement. Questions about taking it out as subsequent.
Yeah, I, I would-
Can you give us an answer to that?
Yeah, absolutely. Here's the situation with this. I mean, from a point of, from a perspective from where we as, would assume that the planning commission based their decision on, is base the decision on the plan, not on perhaps the unfortunate comment. So, if you wanted to say, um, if Mr. Rizzi was willing to put the window in, and he builds the house and he finals it out, and then he comes in for a permit to take the window out, and he takes the windows out and does that, I wouldn't even see that permit.
Would, would he need a permit to take it out?
He would need a permit because he's doing siding, and it's not a repair, it's a structural alteration. So he would need a permit for that.
But he's gotta build to the plan.
He's gotta build to plan. So if Mr. Rizzi was to say, I will put a matching window in that side, the planning commission approves it, uh, Mr. Rizzi goes on and builds the house according to the plan. He finds out, you know what, this window isn't so bad, I like it, he could keep it. But there would be nothing stopping him from coming back and saying, you know what, I don't like it, and I'm gonna take it out, so I'll get a permit and I'll remove that, and I'll put in the structural members necessary.
What would get in the way of me getting that permit?
Pardon me?
Us.
No, it wouldn't come to you. No.
Wouldn't have to come back?
It wouldn't. That would, that wouldn't, I wouldn't even see that. That wouldn't even come to planning or zoning for that. That would just be a matter of coming in for a building permit some years down the line. And then on the inverse of that, there's also the situation where Mr. Rizzi may decide that, you know what, I like the additional light in here, and it balances out the room, the bed fits on the wall between that, I could fit my nightstands, and this is great. No harm done, I'll just keep it 'cause I already paid for it.
And that's no different than any-
That's no different than any plan. That's no different than any plan.
In terms of making, somebody making changes or not making changes, as to whether or not they have to come back.
Right, that's correct. Like if you, for example, if, um, you modify, uh, your kitchen, your kitchen's in the back of the house, you block up a window, the planning commission wouldn't see that. Um, if you wanted to add a window in the back of the house, conversely, the planning commission wouldn't see that either. So, um, those are things where the planning commission has purview over what's in front of you today. And that, that's really where that's at, and that's why, um, with all due respect and, and the, the unfortunate-ness of that comment, um, perhaps there's an opportunity to move forward with a plan based on the plan itself. And if the window goes in, and then that's what it takes for them to gain their approval, and they're amenable to that, then perhaps that could be taken. If it's not amenable, and they say, well, look, I don't want the window, I want to vote it up or down as I presented it tonight, they're also entitled to that. But any motion should not be predicated on the comment.
I'm just trying to take the temperature down a little.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And I wanted to make sure that the commission and the applicant both understood the, the comment is unfortunate because it suggests bad faith in terms of, of the commitment that's being made as far as the building of the place to us. Because I'll, you know, I'll, I'll build whatever you need to make you happy, and then I'll nibble away at it so it's the way I want it in the first place. And I just wanna make, make sure there's a realistic understanding on the part of the commission.
That that can happen anyway.
As to whether or not that can happen anyway. That's not in any way endorsing the suggestion that was made in terms of bad faith.
But to be clear, it could happen anyway, but this is the first time I'm hearing that.
That, that's, that's absolutely true.
Yeah, it isn't, I, I have been doing this for five years. Something like that has never been threatened before, and it's troubling. Uh, I'm willing to look beha- past it. Um, uh, I hope you appreciate why you reacted, why you elicited such a reaction. If you don't, we'll have to talk about it later.
Can I, can I ask an additional question? Um, Mr. Rizzi, are you, are you an owner of the house? Are you just the architect of the building?
Amy's the owner.
Okay.
I'm assisting her with this project.
Okay, got it, all right.
And, and part of my consideration is, I don't want the homeowner to be paying the price for-
I understand, I understand that.
So perhaps the question should be posed to the homeowner, not the architect?
Yes, are you willing to put a window in that location in light of what you heard the other members of the panel say in order to increase the likelihood of approval tonight? It's your choice. We're not gonna force speed to-
I will say, I feel I prefer not to. It's the same answer, I prefer not to.
Okay.
That's why they're not in the drawings in the very first place.
Right.
But I would if I had to, to get the house built, and to get, to get approval to have the house built.
Which is something that-
And actually, a simple house, as you can see, I am taking a twelve hundred square foot house and just doubling it.
Yep. Right.
Originally, I was going to make it larger, but I changed my mind. Just want a very simple house. I just want a larger kitchen, and it kind of grew.
Right. Right. So, we heard you-
I'm not in favor of that many windows on that side of the house, but if I have to, I will. And I don't wanna talk out of it.
So- Right. I, say that again?
I don't wanna be, I don't wanna get talked out of it, but I'd like to get it approved.
Okay. So, uh, I am hearing you agree, albeit reluctantly,
Yes.
to put that window in that location in order to increase the likelihood of, uh, approval tonight.
I, I would like to move approval of the plan as presented.
We've got another motion pending already. Does anyone withdraw the motion? Or, whose motion was it? You wanna withdraw?
Okay, well, I- No.
You do not wanna withdraw? Okay?
I second it.
All right.
Okay, then any further debate on Mike's motion? All those in, which is to deny. All those in favor of Mike's motion to deny, say aye.
Aye.
One, two. All those opposed? Seven, two to seven, it's denied. Thank you for your motion, though. Um, we have opportunity for another motion.
I, I'd like to move acceptance of the plan as presented, clearly without that extra window on the left side.
Without?
Without the window, okay? As presented.
So you want it as presented?
As presented, and if, if that gets turned down, then we go to the next.
Okay. Second?
Mr. Chairman, can I point out at this point in time, since you're now in the affirmative motion, that any motion that you have should also include, uh, the necessary variance, subject to the necessary variances in completion of the successful lock combination?
Okay, I'll adopt that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay with the second?
Yeah.
Yep. All those in favor of Sheldon's motion, say aye. One, two, three, four, four. All those opposed? Five. So that motion fails. Does anyone wanna make another motion?
Motion to approve the, uh, the plan as presented.
Excuse me, the second part, we'd like to ask a question, and also, if you could speak up, I can't hear you.
Okay.
Should've sent it at the beginning.
We ask a question?
Sure.
We were here a month ago, and it was lengthy discussion on adding a second window to the second floor of the left side of the home. The home defined as left side per the drawing. The second window was added. Now, we're suggesting the third one. What happened to adding a second window is complying with the request. I haven't heard that explanation. Can that be presented, can that explanation be provided to the homeowner?
I won't speak for the panel, but when we see the newly presented plans, which we had never seen before, there are expanses that still give the panel discomfort, and to make the panel more comfortable, as I think the votes are reflecting, we're asking the homeowner to add that window. We hadn't seen the plan before tonight, we're seeing it now, we base it on the plans, and that's where we are. So, does anyone wanna make a motion?
I'll add one thing to, to your comment. I think not seeing the plan is what the difficult thing was. I think if, in my opinion, if that window that you had added had been shifted further to the back or more equally spaced on that expanse, it might have been enough for me. Two windows might have been enough for me. But because of where they were placed, I still saw a big expanse there.
Do you wanna make a motion, Mayor? Have you made a motion?
I have not yet.
Okay. I would like you to.
Well, how, how do we know a third window?
We're voting to-
Well, you're gonna-
We're voting to approve right now if we get that motion.
You're voting to approve right now, subject to the addition of that second, I, I assume that's where the discussion is going, subject to the window, since the other possibilities have been exhausted.
Yes.
So this would be an approval, so if you did agree that you wanted to put that in there, and the planning commission approved it, that would be the end of it, and you would be able to get your permit tomorrow.
I'll make a motion to approve the plan as presented with the addition of a third window on the left second story, similar or same in size as the, the smaller one that is existing, subject to the variances of the lock.
The successful lock combination.
Is there a second?
I, I myself am confused on where that intended window is to go, so I'd like to make sure that we're clear on that. Because I don't know where, and I'm confused as to why you would choose the smaller one.
I thought that would look better for the first one.
You know, you got the motion?
Okay, it's fine.
Okay, and, and the window would go on the left elevation towards the rear of the house, second story.
So that the left and right windows can get it, so that's me and the left.
You are looking on the left elevation, it will be towards the rearmost portion of the house.
Yeah, towards the left.
It will be a two oh four oh single hung window.
So, so everything, back and nothing on the side of the fireplace.
Right, no one's talking about dealing with the side of the fireplace, which is the original house.
Yeah.
Okay? So, is there a second for that particular motion? Folks?
I'll make a sen- a second.
Okay.
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Sure.
I think it's friendly. Um, that the window size be listed as the minimum. I'll probably be told that's not okay.
Or larger?
Yeah, or larger.
Okay, you're okay with that?
We can all-
The mayor's okay with that?
Um, okay.
There's a motion, there's a second. Would anyone like to make a comment on the motion that's pending to approve?
I'd like to make one comment?
Yep.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Yes, absolutely. I'm, sorry. Um, I think you heard the mayor say, and I would agree, that a central placement of that larger window in the master bedroom would be another way to balance the fenestration on the second story. However, also placing, also that, that would be a problem for any master, any bed placement, obviously on that wall, right? So, maybe the only realistic solution is a second window. I just wanna make sure you, as a homeowner, are okay with that? 'Cause it seems like we've gone around quite a bit before we vote.
Okay.
I'm asking if you're okay with the two windows as opposed to a centrally placed window, 'cause that's the other option the mayor was thinking about.
He's talking about moving, yeah.
The mayor suggests, suggested in the master bedroom centrally placing that one window. That would be a problem for the bed.
It would, it would limit the options substantially to center that window on the wall for the interior configuration.
My main point is to clarify with you, the homeowner, that you understand what's being asked and you're okay with it before we vote.
So I answered no. No, thank you.
So, so you're, you aren't-
To that, to a small window.
We-
To moving it, right.
Right, okay. And then-
But it is not, it's not ideal.
Right, and so you, but you are okay with the- Right, and so you, but you are okay with the second window that is proposed in the current?
Which will be-
That is the current proposal?
Which will be a third total window on the second elevation.
So there'll be two windows in the master bedroom on the left side elevation? Okay, thank you.
May, may I ask a question of the homeowner? I'll say the answer. I'm looking, I'm looking at your plan, and I understand what you're trying to do on that wall. And I understand that the mayor's, the mayor has suggested the size of the windows that's in the walk-in closet as a minimum size. The length of the wall, what, what may be a better proposal from a, an aesthetic point of view, both inside and outside that room, would be to make that second window obviously close to that back corner at the same size as the other window that's in that room, allowing you to have that larger expanse to put a bed frame in between the two windows. Does that make sense to you?
I think the motion is made in accordance.
It, it, it may.
Is then a choice.
It may. And I, and I understand that you, your amendment of the minimum of the size allows them to make a larger window, probably matching. I assume that was your intent. I assume that was your intent, okay.
But we're not-
I don't want to, I don't, I just, I just wanted to make sure you understood the point. He's explaining as well. I like what you have suggested, uh, the mayor has suggested.
In terms of moving the window over?
Or put it so that the, the second window in that room is the size of the new window.
So mayor, do you want to, do you want to, so we're all on the same page? Want to state your motion, so we can follow it, because I'm a little bit confused right now.
We're approving a plan as presented with the addition of a third window on the left elevation, second story, towards the rear of the house, subject to the zoning variance and the lot split completion. With a minimum size of that window.
There you go.
That of the smaller one.
Okay, that's what I thought it was. Uh, is there a second to that motion?
We, we have seconded and amended it to be that motion, and I did sketch it, if it pleases the chairman to see it.
No, no, I, I am perfectly fine with the narrative description.
Okay.
So there's a second. Is there any discussion on the pending motion before we vote? There is none? All those in favor, say aye.
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 One, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All those saying nay?
Two.
Seven to two. It passes. Okay, uh, the last item on the agenda is public participation. Is there anyone who would like to make any comments or anything to discuss? And Hank, maybe we can take this opportunity just to give a brief update as to where we are with zoning.
Yeah, um, I, I, just so that you're aware that the zoning ordinance was not for naught, uh, we are interviewing for focus groups right now. We've sent out invitations. By interviewing, I mean we're trying to see who is available for which groups that we have. Um, we are getting responses currently. They're coming in daily. We've also asked for a focus group of designers and builders. Um, and we are getting responses from them as well. So our focus groups appear to be well on the way to being filled. Uh, as soon as that happens, we will be scheduling them. Uh, the way that this will work is that Carlisle Warpman will be running it. I will be present at these focus groups to answer any questions, comments, or provide any explanations for the focus groups. Um, we're kind of excited to get this back on track, but sometimes it takes a little while to put these things together. But, uh, residents' invitations have already gone out. They were randomly selected. And, uh, we are getting responses on a daily basis.
How's the response rate going?
So far, we're, uh, we're, we're getting, I want to say, we sent out way more invitations, and what we're doing is we're filling it first come, first served. So, uh, as of today, I don't have an exact count. Um, but I do know that Heidi was working on the invitations today, so, uh, and I do know that I did hear, uh, I think approximately four to five people RSVP today. So I anticipate that they'll be filled fast, and then we'll be on track to provide that, uh, that type of, uh, facility and to facilitate that for the residents, so that their voices can also be heard.
Anyone have any questions for Hank about zoning or the focus groups? Um, okay, public participation is closed. Uh, motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
Any second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion's adjourned. See you next month.